Live.
Is the microphone, okay. Rachelle Moyer, here. Steve Holfield.
Here.
Terry McClung.
I'm here.
David Avanzino.
Here.
Susan Gerting.
Here.
Harry Meyer.
I'm here.
All right, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to their government, which is one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal. We have three public hearings beginning before we get into our business tonight. Our first public hearing, we will entertain any comments on this section of the street, vacating section of Alpena Avenue. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of or against vacating section of Alpena Avenue? If there is, please come up to the microphone. All right, I see no one has any public comments, one way or the other, on vacating Alpena Avenue. If not, then I will have the public hearing closed and open up the public hearing for vacating a section of Lone Street. Is there anybody here who would like to speak for or against Lone Street closing?
It's lonely.
All right, nobody here to speak for or against. I will consider the public hearing closed for that application. And next application is a section vacating an unnamed alley. So, anybody here on that comments? All right, saying none, then I will consider the public hearing closed and we will reconvene as our regular city council meeting with our planning commission report, I mean, our reports and your package. You'll have the hospital monthly financials.
Agenda approval.
Beg your pardon?
Agenda approval.
Oh, I need the agenda approval, I'm sorry. You're right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any additions, corrections?
None.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the agenda submitted, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I get approval for the minutes for September 8th.
I move we approve the minutes for September 8th, 2025, City Council.
Second.
All right.
There is no minutes.
Beg your pardon?
There is no minutes.
Oh, there are no minutes, huh? All right, well, we will have to defer those minutes. Sorry, guys, until our next time. All right, now we will come down to our committee reports and you got your monthly financials in there for the hospital on there. There's nothing on any of our commissions at this time.
I'd like to point out, all of our commissions are full right now. I think that's the first time in history that I remember, so.
It's a good sign.
Keep it, keep it going, so.
All right. All right, next is our public comments. Please limit your time to three minutes per person, so we'll take it in order as you had signed up.
First up is Mr. Jeff Griffith.
Hey, I'm Jeff Griffith and I'm at 2100 East Van Buren in Eureka Springs. I've never been to a city council meeting and I'm not a really good public speaker, but I just have a few things that I want to convey that are concerns of mine. And we're a business owner in our community and I've heard several other business owners that are concerned just about some of the things that have been said in the community and some of the, I believe, politically charged events that have occurred here lately. I don't believe that political views serve our community well. I think it steals away from our tourism. And I also have an opinion that as an elected official, I think it's important for each and every one of you to put your personal views aside and do what's best for the community. Really, that's all I have to say. I think we can do better as a community. I think that we should do better as a community. I think open conversation is healthy and you may agree or disagree, but I hope that you'll consider what I say tonight and I'm just, like I said, I'm just trying to look out for our community and what's best for our community as a business owner. That's all I have to say.
Josh Dugan.
Hi, I'm Josh Dugan. I live at 29 Elkh Street here in Eureka Springs. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening and for hearing about my concern. On September 10th, Councilmember Avanzino posted "right-wing nut job shot in the neck" on Facebook. I asked the council and mayor to address whether Councilmember Avanzino's Facebook post was appropriate for an elected official and appointed commissioner. Please note, I am not asking you if you think it was his legal right to do so. I am asking you, was it appropriate? And some may attempt to make the case that it was a personal page, but elected officials are, by nature of their accepted roles, held to a higher standard. Furthermore, on September 12th, Mr. Avanzino called the police to have citizens arrested for their own Facebook posts. The police found his request meritless, which I say to them, thank you. I support our police force wholeheartedly. We must reflect on whether it is appropriate for a council member to attempt to weaponize the police and attempt to punish and silence others. I emphasize with the difficult decisions you face and I recognize your positive contributions to our city. This meeting is public record and your words or lack of will have a lasting impact. Ignoring this issue may be seen as consent or evasion and could potentially be escalated to the state level if not resolved. Let's work together to address this and strengthen our community. In closing, I ask that you reflect on these events and share your thoughts on that appropriateness. Thank you for your time and consideration and let's work together to ensure our community remains respectful. Thank you.
Robert Bruno.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Bruno. I am the owner, operator of Rowdy Beaver Restaurant and Tavern on West Van Buren. When we think of people who represent a community such as ours, a few elements of what kinds of folks those would be come to mind: clergymen, families, whether new or present for generations, business owners, and the very fabric of those businesses, which are the people who keep them running day to day, without whom we would be very, very lost. Every one of these community members is a part of a tapestry of what makes our town a wonderful place to live, a fantastic place to spend a few days, and every single one of these community members makes a different, a difference and is crucial to the machine in which they operate. A community looks out for one another. They do not harass their neighbors or allow their loved ones to act foolishly towards other business owners and their families. They should not set a poor example as a business owner, but also as a human being that is an integral part of this community, which prides itself on human kindness, diversity, and acceptance, especially when using tools such as social media. While doing a shallow search regarding meta prospecting, the reach of social media for Eureka Springs in 2024 is a staggering 3,173,000 and change. These social media impressions that people are getting of Eureka Springs play a key role in the decision-making process of would-be visitors to our beautiful town. What does not make a solid, positive impression is a local business owner, sitting city council member, CAPC Commissioner, and Board of Directors President of the Purple Flower, an organization that helps victims of domestic violence. I'm speaking directly to you, David Avanzino. Taking to social media on the same day that Charlie Kirk was murdered on a college campus in Utah and calling him a right-wing nut on Facebook in a post that contained the name of your own business, Wanderu Lodge, no less as well as our town, so at a glance that those who do not live here and are unfamiliar with the area, and you, can see. At the end of the day, the one thing we know about Charlie Kirk without knowing him personally is that regardless of what he believed or said, he was a human being who deserved to live. The very least that anybody, especially someone who owns a business, is constantly demanding his feelings be heard, even when they are misguided and put forth gracelessly, and without any regard for how his twisting of situations hurt others and holds a seat on the city council could do, is be mindful of what he says publicly about the death of a 31-year-old man, murdered in cold blood. David Avanzino, this is not the kind of man we want representing our town. He is not someone who should be making decisions for a community of people when we cannot properly leverage social media to meet his own personal and professional needs without being offensive, cold, and heartless about the senseless and untimely death of another human being.
That's three minutes. Mayor, mayor, is it possible, mayor, is it possible to let him continue speaking?
We've got a lot of people here who want to speak, so we need to continue.
Next up is Jana Parsons.
Hello, I've lived here four years and it's my first city council meeting. I don't own a business here, but I try to shop here as much as possible and eat here as much as possible and I love being in Eureka. The beauty and the history and, and the Eureka vibe that everyone's welcome. But everyone isn't welcome. We need unity in Eureka and that includes everyone. We can't afford to only focus on one group of us. We need all of us. When I see the recent hateful rhetoric that everyone's been talking about from the gravel bar owner and not too long ago, the guy that shot his dog in his front yard with a bullet he got from the city, all I see is drama and craziness. We need competence in our city council and I want to thank you for all that you do. I mean, we have issues here. We've got closed stores and restaurants, crumbling infrastructure, sewer issues. I know you're working through those and I appreciate it, but I don't see competence when I'm just hearing about the city council. I only see drama and craziness and bias against anyone not from a particular group. I love the gravel bar, the music, the pizza, the Moscow mules, maybe that's just me on the Moscow mules, but they are very good, the dancing. I try to go there even more, but often friends of mine have friends of theirs that have been banned from there. What is that? That isn't unity, that's the opposite of unity. Again, we need all of us. If your efforts are not to support everyone in Eureka, no matter your stripes, then you don't belong on the city council. It will only cause more drama and more craziness and make people feel left out. That's all kinds of people. The world is changing and we don't have time anymore for craziness. Thank you.
Adam Sandoval.
Adam Sandoval, 560 West Van Buren, Eureka Springs. This message is like all the others you're hearing tonight and it's just a concern for my community. You know, David, you sit on the city council and with that comes an inherent obligation to do duty for our community and to represent all sides of our community. This is supposed to be a town that I love dearly because it's all-inclusive, but it's not really when we've got council members that are going out and excluding people, not only from their personal life, but from their personal businesses. There's a list of people who've been exiled from this bar simply for their political beliefs. That is not, I repeat, that is not the due diligence of somebody sitting in the city council. There's obligations, I believe, there's a standard code of ethics that you all are supposed to live by. Honesty, integrity, public service. I don't think what we saw here today represents any of those. I'm just disappointed. I supported you, I stood behind you, even though we have different differences. But deflecting what you said and what you did is not admirable. You should be apologizing, taking ownership of it, and working to be a better human being. That's all I have to say.
David Budakali.
David Budakali, 23 East Mountain, resident here in Eureka. Proud resident of Eureka, love this place. I have to tell you, Mr. Avanzino, I was just shocked when I saw that. I was saying, what was he thinking about? Did he think that was a good idea? What was going through his mind? Surely he knows that would be a divisive comment in a town that we're supposed to be inclusive and, and everybody's loving each other and we want to break, and we're preaching to other people to come here and enjoy the fun. It's completely counter to that. I just didn't understand it and I said, well, can you imagine if I'd said this, right? Or if I'd posted this, or somebody had said this on September the 11th? Just think this through. I wouldn't say it, but just imagine, 22-year-old left-wing convert in a transgender relationship murders a defenseless husband, Charlie Kirk, father of two, in front of a crowd of thousands, including children, citing hatred for the victim as his motivation. Can you imagine what would have happened had I had posted that? I would have been an outcast. I'm on the planning commission, I would have immediately gotten rid of, there's no question about that. And it would have been rightful to do that, by the way, because it's insensitive, it's divisive, and it's just downright vile. So, then I try to think about what, what would have led to the motivation for you to do that? And there's only just a few things. None of them are really good and we need an explanation. Either you don't care about what the public thinks, or you just don't have any regard for what they think, or you have some false sense of importance, which is translated into some unjustified arrogance, which allows you to act without regard to others, that's a possibility, or you're just filled with anger and you're lacking a moral compass, or you just incorrectly assume that there are more people who think like you than really do. And that's even more scary. But none of these is satisfactory for somebody in your position, both a city council member and on the CAPC, trying to represent Eureka to bring people into this town. I just don't understand it. No matter the reason, you're not serving the interest of Eureka Springs, that's for certain, particularly in a time when this beautiful city is trying to grow its base, reputation as a welcoming, fun, safe, family-friendly place and a great place to visit and live. Your actions are completely counter to this goal. So, as a citizen and lover of this town, I call on you, Mr. Avanzino, to do one of two things. One, you need to issue a written statement, not some half-baked nonsense apology like you did on Facebook, a written letter delivered to the mayor's office where you sincerely apologize for your divisive, vile comments and you vow to do a lot better job in the future. Because you're, you're not only, the other thing, I could, oh, let me just say one other thing, I couldn't understand, you're a business guy. We're patrons of your facility. Why would you run off people? Number one, you need to issue that written statement to the mayor's office.
That's three minutes. Last up, we have Mr. Jay Fusaro.
Hello, my name's Jay Fusaro, 21 Owen Street. David, I found your comments about Charlie's murder were both offensive and insensitive. Your comments certainly don't reflect the culture of tolerance in our community, or do they reflect the values of our community? Your comment should have been, as any decent person would have said, that Charlie's murder was disgusting. Rather, what you said, as everyone has knows here, is that a right-wing nut job was shot in the throat. Think for a moment if a prominent gay rights activist, while talking about something that they believed in, and someone in our community said that a left-wing gay rights nut job was just shot in the throat, how would you feel about those comments and what would the outcry be? Where's the tolerance shown towards Christians and conservatives that this community preaches towards other groups? You called Charlie's positions on the Second Amendment and gay rights dangerous. His words are not dangerous. Calling words dangerous is the type of hyperbole that fans the flames of violence. You referenced in your post about meaningful gun control laws. Are you aware that in Chicago, there's going to be over 432 murders and they have some of the strictest gun laws in the country? The problem isn't the gun, it's the person holding the gun and weak penalties for those that commit crimes that involve guns. You, like everyone else, certainly has a right to First Amendment free speech, but that free speech does not come without consequence and you're seeing tonight the consequences of your reckless free speech. I hope you feel a great deal of shame towards your insensitive and intolerant comments and as a result, I believe you should resign. Your comments do not reflect the values of this community. Now, if you choose not to resign, I would be glad to meet you at the Stone House for a glass of wine or at Brew's for a cup of coffee and talk about the issues that this town faces, particularly I'm concerned about dilapidated homes and abandoned homes in our community, but I do believe you should resign for your insensitive comments. Thank you.
That's everybody.
All right, anybody else? Last chance. All right, with that, we'll close our public comments for this evening. Brings us up to our first unfinished business, get a motion to discuss sewer updates.
So moved.
Second. Simon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, a little bit of our sewer updates on the progress at the sewer plant. So, we recently had the new decanter installed in that sledge basin. We also installed the 40-volt service, servicing panel for the aeration and mixer. We're waiting on the contractor to come back to install that equipment. One of the SBR influent valves has arrived and we're waiting the second one and we'll get that scheduled as soon as that second one arrives. And then today, we removed one of the lift station pumps at the wastewater treatment plant that pumps the sewage from the office building, I guess essentially. We had a bad pump in there, but we're taking one of the pumps that we have in stock and utilizing it to, to fix that. So, that's about all I have for sewer updates. Stand for any questions.
Anything new from McClellan?
No, not really. I have been receiving some letters from the Natural Resource Commission and Department of Health saying that they concur with the plans and stuff that has been submitted so far, so everything's rolling on that and that's about all I know at this time.
Nothing on any of the grants or the grant that we've applied for, that's all, but that has all been processed, it's in the works?
Yes, yeah, they've approved all that, it's just based off the.
No, I'm talking about the second one, not, not the first.
No, I have no updates on that.
All right, anybody else? All right, we'll jump right into the water leaks and remediation. Get a motion to discuss on that?
Motion discussed.
Second.
So, I didn't really write anything down because this doesn't have anything about the water rates on the agenda?
No, water leaks.
Leaks?
Water leaks, not water rates.
Okay. Well, we had that major leak that was down there on Van Buren in front of the Osage Hotel over there. We fixed that, we're going to have to do some asphalt work out there. I've got Emery Sap looking into that. We're going to do a 50-foot patch in there where it rodded out that new asphalt overlay. And aside from that, we've just been replacing old meters. We're working on three of them right now on Spring Street over by Nelson's and then the one up the road and down the road from there, so.
Mr. McClellan?
It's a little bit off of track here, but how are they coming with the gas line work on Mill Hollow? I know they're still down there plugging away, is, I mean, it's not, they're not getting in your way or blocking the street or anything like that? It's not having any problems with any existing water lines or?
Right, I'm not really familiar with the work they're doing on Mill Hollow. I know they did some work down on Main Street and in the front yard of a house, but I'm not familiar with their work that they're doing on Mill Hollow at this time.
Yeah, it's replacing gas lines.
Mr. Meyer? We seem to have been experiencing a little low water pressure on, on East Mountain. Has the water tower not been?
Yeah, the water towers have been fine. I haven't, I haven't received any reports about anything on East Mountain as far as low water pressure. I did get, I did get a report over on Passion Play about low water pressure down there at Echo Village. We did some exploration down there and did a few taps on the main and opened some hydrants and we're not getting any pressure drops on the main itself, but there's an issue with the community building down at Echo Village that they have something in their plumbing that's reducing the water pressure to like 18 PSI, but at the meter, we're getting 30, which is, is acceptable according to the state, so.
I wonder if it's just my house?
Yeah, I have not received any calls, I have no knowledge of low water pressure over there.
Mr. Holifield?
I'll go further off the track here. Mike Maloney said there's a water leak under this building and he called you and talked to you about that.
Yeah.
Apparently, it's been leaking worse and worse and he asked about fixing it. What is the policy for the city not fixing city properties?
Yeah, so we fixed the meter, so the meter is like your house meter. If you have a plumbing leak in your house, we don't fix your plumbing. The auditorium, it goes to the meter and once it goes to the meter, it's not public anymore as far as Public Works is concerned. We're getting ready to do, so I brought this up to the CAPC Director at the time when we found the leak in the tunnel and nothing was done about it. If I have a leak in the Public Works yard, I call a plumber and have a plumber come fix it, you know, in one of my buildings, but the CAPC, they operate a little bit different than I guess every other department does, so I don't know where we're at with that. I do know that we're scheduling another inspection of the tunnel here in the next week or so and we'll get some new images and figure out what's going on down there, but we don't fix, we're not plumbers, so we don't fix lines like that.
In answer to your question, Mr. Holifield, Simon and I discussed that and once I get down there, we don't know exactly where that leak is. And this is really about the first time I've heard about it, was from comments I heard from Mike. So, we're going to try to find out where it is and then we'll try to get a plumber down there to get it repaired, so we can see where we are. So, there's some other plumbing issues that we need to address while we're down there also, but getting that water leak, we'll look at and see if we can find it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, Simon, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us up to our next item of unfinished business, get a motion to discuss ambulance rate increase.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right, you have in front of you, I'm not sure, I think Gary's here, I hope.
He's here.
Yep, there he is. I don't know if you have a hand of any questions. The last time we decided to change the ordinance to where we would have a 325% rate increase established in here as opposed to billings with specifics rates on there and this ordinance reflects that and I think that's basically the change on here. So, is there any question, Mr. Meyer? Well, since this increase is basically just for insurance companies, it's not for anyone else, not for Medicare, not for, that's, I think, I'd like to make a motion to put a number on this ordinance and read it for passage. Read it, put it on first reading? All right. Ms. Gerting?
So, Legal has looked at this and this is all?
The legal wrote this. Yep. So, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Meyer, I've made the motion to sign this a number and read on first reading. Mr. Holifield, second any further discussion? Mr. McClellan?
Yeah, so I missed the last meeting, so I'm a little bit off track here, but wanting to get back on track, the 325%, so that is whatever the existing charge is, it's going to go up 325% for each different category, whatever it is. Is that right?
It's 325% of the rural Medicare rate, not 325% of what we charge now.
Okay, okay, that's, that's, makes a big difference. Okay, all right.
Any other further questions? All right, so we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved.
Signing ordinance number 2372, an ordinance amending section 2.44.090A regarding emergency medical services fees. Whereas, the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has determined that section 2.44.090A of the municipal code should be amended in order to regulate the efficiently the charges for EMS services. Now therefore, hereby ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one, that section 2.44.090A of the municipal code is hereby amended to read as follows. 2.44.090A1 EMS ambulance transport charges. The following maximum base rate charge is hereby established for ambulance service offered by persons having permits under this section. For each trip, whether emergency or non-emergency, within the limits of the city, 325% of the Medicare ambulance fee schedule Arkansas rural rate as established by the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid at the time of the date of service for the same service provided. 2.44.090A2 adjustments to accounts for emergency medical services. All patient accounts paid in full within 30 days of the initial statement date shall be discounted 10%. All accounts will be collected per federal and state laws. Indignant... Oh, I'm sorry, my brain's not working today. Indignant patient bills may be written off to extent that the receiving hospital writes off that patient's hospital bill. Section two, all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such a conflict. Each of the provisions of this ordinance are severable, and the decision of any court having jurisdiction as to the validity of any provision shall not affect the remaining provisions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move we approve ordinance 2372 on its first reading.
Second.
All right. Mr. Mayor made the motion to approve ordinance 2372 on its first reading. Ms. Gruning seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, sing five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Y'all wanna read it a second time, you can leave it.
I don't think there's a hurry, is there?
Well, it's costing, it's costing the ambulance money.
Well, I guess it is, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that we read ordinance 2372 for its second reading by title only.
Suspend the rules and read by title only.
Suspend the rules.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Avenzino? All right. Mr. Mayor made the motion, Mr. Avenzino seconded. Any further discussion? All right, roll call.
Susan Gruning?
Yes.
David Avenzino?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
Terry McLung?
Yes.
Rochelle Moyer?
Yes.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2372, an ordinance amending section 2.44.090A regarding emergency medical services fees.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 2372 on its second reading. Suspend the rules, right?
No.
Second.
All right. Mr. Mayor made the motion to approve 2372 on second reading, and Mr. Avenzino seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Terry McLung?
Yes.
Susan Gruning?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
Rochelle Moyer?
Yes.
David Avenzino?
Yes.
Okay. So moved. All right. Want to move on? Okay, our next item of new business is an ordinance vacating section of Alpina Avenue. Get a motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any comments, Ms. Gruning?
I'm not familiar, so I don't know where these areas are, and not that I guess it really matters. My question is, so we vacate part of it, but who maintains it? Does anybody...
It reverts back to the owners.
Oh, goes to the owners?
The adjacent owners.
Yep.
Each owner owns it to the center line.
Okay. So then they would be responsible?
They're responsible, and then they end up with that on their tax row, too.
Okay.
Yep.
That answers all three.
Yep. Mr. McClung?
Yeah, I've, I looked at all three of these today, and I don't see any problems with any of them, and of course, we had no conflict here during the public hearing, so I want to go ahead and make a motion that we assign this ordinance a number for the vacation on Alpina Avenue. Sign a number, read it for its first reading.
Second.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Procedureal question. Can we do the first reading by title only, or do we have...
We can. We can suspend the rules.
Just have to move to suspend the rules, yes.
Just like we do for the second and third.
You can do that on any ordinance.
Yeah. Mr. McClung?
I'd like to amend my motion to suspend the rules.
Why don't you take your motion back?
Well, okay, I take it back. I take it back everything I was...
So, see, let's make it all broken.
Take it all back. I'm gonna start over.
Okay.
I make a motion that we suspend the rules and assign a number for this ordinance and read it for its first reading by title only.
All right. Here.
Second.
All right. I'm gonna go with Mr. Avenzino. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, sing five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do you have to do a roll call since we're suspending rules?
Yes, and it has to pass for two thirds.
Yeah, that's in special, that's true, yeah. Roll call.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
David Avenzino?
Yes.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Susan Gruning?
Yes.
Terry McLung?
Yes.
Rochelle Moyer?
Yes.
Signing ordinance number 2373, an ordinance vacating a portion of Alpina Avenue between block 38 lot 1 and block 33 lot 4 of the Freeman Edition.
Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2373 on its first reading.
Second.
All right. Got a motion by Mr. McClung. Mr. Mayor seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
David Avenzino?
Yes.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
Rochelle Moyer?
Yes.
Susan Gruning?
Yes.
Terry McLung?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2373 for its second reading by title only.
Second.
Mr. McClung made the motion. Mr. Avenzino seconded to read 2372 by title only for the second reading.
Seventy-three.
Suspend the reading for...
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three. Yeah. All right. Any further discussion? Title only? I mean, roll call, please.
Terry McLung?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
David Avenzino?
Yes.
Rochelle Moyer?
Yes.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Susan Gruning?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2373, an ordinance vacating a portion of Alpina Avenue between block 38 lot 1 and block 33 lot 4 of the Freeman Edition.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2373 on its second reading. Second.
All right. Mr. Mayor made the motion. Mr. McClung seconded to approve 2373 on the second reading. Any discussion? All right. Roll call.
Rochelle Moyer?
Yes.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Terry McLung?
Yes.
David Avenzino?
Yes.
Susan Gruning?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
All right. That brings up to our second item is vacating a section of Lone Street.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay. All right. Mr. McClung?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we assign this ordinance a number and suspend the rules and read it, put it on its first reading by title only.
Second.
All right. Mr. McClung made the motion to sign this a number and suspend the rules and put it on the first reading by title only. Mr. Mayor seconded. Any further comments, discussion? All right. Roll call.
Susan Gruning?
Yes.
David Avenzino?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
Terry McLung?
Yes.
Rochelle Moyer?
Yes.
Steve Holfield? Signing, sorry, signing ordinance number 2374, an ordinance vacating a portion of Lone Street between block 2A and block 3 of the Riley and Armstrong survey.
Mr. McClung?
Motion to approve ordinance 2374 on its first reading.
Second.
Mr. McClung made the motion to approve it on first reading. Mr. Mayor seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Terry McLung?
Yeah.
Susan Gruning?
Yes.
David Avenzino?
Yes.
Rochelle Moyer?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
I make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2374 for its second reading by title only.
Second.
All right. Mr. McClung made the motion to suspend the rules and read 2374 by title only. Mr. Mayor seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
David Avenzino?
Yes.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Susan Gruning?
Yes.
Terry McLung?
Yep.
Rochelle Moyer?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2374, an ordinance vacating a portion of Lone Street between block 2A and block 3 of the Riley and Armstrong survey.
Mr. McClung?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2374 on its second reading.
Second.
All right. Mr. McClung made the motion to approve 2374 on its second reading. Mr. Mayor seconded. Any comments? Okay. Roll call.
David Avenzino?
Yes.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
Rochelle Moyer?
Yes.
Susan Gruning?
Yes.
Terry McLung?
All right. We'll go on to our third item of new business is an ordinance vacating a section of unnamed Get a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
All right.
Second.
Okay. All right. What's council's wish here?
I move that we suspend the rules and read ordinance 2375 by title only for its first reading.
I haven't assigned a number yet.
Yeah, we'll sign a number and read for first reading.
Oh, assign a number, that's right.
All right. Okay. Do I get a second on that?
Yeah.
Me.
All right. Okay, Mr. Mayor made the motion, and Mr. Avenzino seconded to place this ordinance to assign a number and place its comments first reading by title only. Suspend the rules and read by title only. Any further comments? Hearing none. All roll call.
Terry McLung?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
David Avenzino?
Yes.
Rochelle Moyer?
Yes.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Susan Gruning? Signing ordinance number 2375, an ordinance vacating a portion of an unnamed alley between block 2A lots 3 through 5 and lots 18 through 21 of the Riley and Armstrong survey.
Mr. Mayor? I move that we approve ordinance 2375 for its first reading.
Mr. Mayor made the motion to hear second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Avenzino seconded to approve it on second reading. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Rochelle Moyer?
Yes.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Terry McLung?
Yes.
David Avenzino?
Yes.
Susan Gruning?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
All right. That takes us down to our third. Go ahead.
Did they want to do a second reading on that one, too?
Oh, I thought we did do a second.
That was just the first reading.
That was just the first.
That was first reading, I'm sorry. So many. Okay, we want to do a second reading on this?
Why not? I move that we read ordinance 2375 for its second reading by title only.
Second.
All right. Who seconded that?
Gruning.
Susan? Okay. Mr. Mayor made the motion to place by, read it for the second read, ordinance 2375 by title only for its second reading, and Ms. Gruning seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Gurning.
Yes.
David Avenzino.
Yes.
Harry Meyer.
Yes.
Terry McLung.
Yes.
Rochelle Moyer.
Yes.
Steve Hollefield.
Yes.
Ordinance number 2375, an ordinance vacating a portion of an unnamed alley between Block 2A, lots 3 through 5, and lots 18 through 21 of the Riley and Armstrong survey.
Motion to approve ordinance 2375 on its second reading.
Second. And Mr. McClung made the motion to approve 2375 on its second reading. Mr. Myers seconded. Any additional comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Steve Hollefield.
Yes.
Terry McLung.
Yes.
Susan Gurning.
Yes.
Harry Meyer.
Yes.
Rochelle Moyer.
Yes.
David Avenzino.
Yes.
Okay, so that completes our second reading.
Yes.
We'll hold off on the rest of them. All right, next item is ordinance to remove water infrastructure improvement charges. Motion to discuss.
So move.
Second.
Apparently, we don't have one.
We don't have one written yet.
Yeah, so I assume that your office takes care of that?
We are. I would like to, we can get it, the attorney can draft one out and get it to us for the next time.
Yeah, I didn't have that one on my to-do list, but I will have it for next time.
That's great. So do we need to just go ahead and defer to the next meeting?
Yeah, defer it to the next meeting.
Table it, yeah.
Second. All right. All right, that brings us up to Vision Committee, Rochelle Moyer. Motion to discuss?
We will discuss.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Moyer?
Okay, well, I love our community, as I know everyone at the table does, and typically we spend a lot of time just responding to issues that come to the table, it seems, in my short time here. But I was wondering about taking more of a proactive approach, which is why in a couple of meetings ago, I asked about an existing vision plan for the community. And I followed up with you, thanks, Mr. Mayor, for putting me in contact with Cassie, who was able to provide me with what she said was the latest version of a plan for the city that she knew of. And I was able to kind of read through that. And it appears that, so the document that was provided to me to read through was the Donaghy Project from 1996. And the concern that I had with that was, my daughter was born in 1995, and she now has a five-year-old. So I'm thinking that maybe it's time to update, or maybe there have been updates that we're not aware of, or that, I mean, maybe it's just me, and I'm alone here, and I'm not aware of a larger vision plan for the community. But the question that I kind of came to is, where are we on that, on a vision and a plan for the community long-term? Because a lot of surrounding communities have, you know, visions like 2040, 2050, thinking about resilience and sustainability and economic development and all kinds of things. And so, yeah, so the question I wanted to ask at the table was, where are we on that?
It's in the Planning, the Planning Commission held one two years ago, three years ago, maybe. I looked at an update on the vision plan and did a study and had citizens' involvement on there and updated that. They had Jim Von Tunglen, I think I wrote to you in the comments, that Jim came up and looked through the vision plan also, and basically felt that the vision plan was good as it is with the updates that the Planning Commission has. The majority of the time, well, not majority of the time, most, what you're discussing is usually always involves and comes out of the Planning Commission instead of the City Council. City Council's really not involved with the planning and economic development plans that comes out of the Planning Commission. In discussion this with the chairman and also the vice-chairman, who was on the Planning Commission when they did the update, they felt that they had done a pretty good job of going through the vision plan. And of course, they're always willing to look at it again if the council wants them to look at it again and update it. But it's basically the Planning Commission's job in through there.
So, a couple of questions then. Is that the copy that I received? Because there was
I don't know what you, I don't know what you received.
I believe you copied on that email, but it's the 1996 Donaghy Project. And again, I didn't ask for a specific plan, I just asked for the most recent plan. And that was what was given to me. So I think that's what Planning thinks is the most recent vision for the community. And if there was something done a couple of years ago, that didn't get passed to me, but I would love to see that. I would love to see that data. I'm thinking, yeah, we kind of all would like to see that data and kind of see where we stand now and what kind of updates have been done to the 1996 plan. The reason why, I really didn't want this to be contentious, I wanted this to be positive, because I think as we move forward on financing, developing funding solutions for infrastructure improvements, as this legislative body who oversees a budget, I feel like, I mean, we just sort of came down hard on, I would say, I came down hard on a hospital commission for not having an overall plan. And then I'm just like asking about a plan for the city. So how do we move forward on a vision?
Ms. Moyer, this is, if you have a question or comments, what I would say is, we need to direct that to the Planning Commission.
Is there?
The Planning Commission is the group, is the body that looks through the future for the city, and looks into all of that. So if you have a comment, and I look into seeing what they had, but I know from, basically, Eureka Springs is limited in a lot of respects, but they've also implemented a lot of what was done in the Donaghy Plan as far as streets and access. So, you know, the Planning Commission is at a point where you probably need to address that. It's not a City Council function and through there. And it's not, I mean, I understand your concern and your interest in wanting to do things. And I don't mean to be negative about it, but it comes out of the Planning Commission.
So if a lot has been implemented from a 1996 plan, I think that that is wonderful. And that would actually indicate that we need a new plan if a lot has been done from that plan. I'm not commenting on how great or not that plan was. I think it's wonderful that it was done. I'm just asking, can we move forward on a new vision for Eureka Springs and where we're going? And my question would be, because I have actually been involved in visioning aspects in other cities around us as a policy analyst. So I'm not sure, I'm not convinced that there's not a way to set up an ad hoc committee through the council to take on something like this. Not just about zoning and typical planning, but many aspects. And I'll give you an example. Regional growth strategies, housing and development, transportation, sidewalks, sustainability, resilience, economic vitality, workforce development, downtown improvement, many other things, abandoned housing and properties, many, many other things are included in a vision that don't just deal with transportation, which is primarily what the Donaghy Study dealt with. And I would understand that zoning would belong in the Planning Commission, but I'm curious, is there anything, council, that would prevent the City Council from setting up an ad hoc steering committee to oversee maybe data gathering and kind of oversee a process as a limited-time ad hoc committee? Is there anything that stops that?
Actually, we're stepping out of our sandbox.
I'm sorry, what?
You're stepping out of your sandbox.
I'm asking legal counsel if there's any reason why we could not create an ad hoc committee.
I would need to go through the ordinances to see if that is authorized.
I'd like to know that, because I know other cities do it, so.
They do it through the Planning Commission, though, Ms. Moyer.
Well, then how can we, then how can we do that? I'm just asking for a solution.
You're looking for a solution where there may not be a problem.
There's not a problem that the last vision done for the city was 1996?
And according to Jim Von Tunglen, the city planner for the state, who comes up here and talks this, our vision plan is perfectly fine as it is. And he's a professional planner. And I know you have a PhD and you're very intelligent, and you want to do a lot of these plannings, but that's not within the ballpark of the City Council.
Then let me ask you, when will a vision plan be done for the city? If it's not in our purview, then when will it be done, Mr. Mayor?
It's being, it's the, they have already done it, and they're, if you want me to ask the city planning if they feel like they need to have a new vision plan, I will ask them.
Do you feel like there needs to be a vision plan for the city?
Personally, no.
Okay, well, that is very interesting. I also noticed we're budgeting on 0% growth for the next five years. I personally don't think that that's where a city needs to be. Again, I didn't want this to be contentious, I thought it could be actually positive. But I feel like it's time to have the community involved in a planning and a visioning for this community moving forward. We have Northwest Arkansas Corridor, that's one of the fastest-growing areas in the country, and we have no plan for our city in the next five years, 10 years, 20 years. Meanwhile, our infrastructure is crumbling. I mean, I think a vision and a plan would be a great foundation for looking for grants and other things to help us build our community, not just wait for it to crumble and count on zero growth. That's just me.
Mr. Myers?
Mr. Mayor, could we have a workshop with Planning?
We can have a workshop with the Planning.
I think that might be a good way to.
Basically, I don't mean for zero growth, and am I happy with the vision plan? I'm happy with the results that they came out with. And I'm happy and I have confidence in what, you know, the Planning Commission has done. Now, you're absolutely right, there's growth over there and the impact on here. It costs to do the Donaghy Plan and to do what you're talking to do, to get a mediator in here to do a professional plan, it probably costs about $100,000.
There are many ways to go about it, and I can do it. I guarantee you, we can find a way to do it, not spending that money.
The last one cost us $16,000, and that was with another grant to back up that from the state.
To be honest with you, what it sounds like is reasons not to do it. And I am not a person that does well with that kind. I want to be positive, and I want to move forward with a visioning plan. And I would say, I am requesting right now that we have the most recent plan, if it's not the 1996 Donaghy Plan, then we have the most recent plan to look at, so that we can see exactly what's been done and how it's been updated. And I'd like to know from the rest of this body, are you interested in doing and seeing a vision and a development of a vision for this town moving forward, like a decade, two decades? It shouldn't be a contentious issue. I think it's positive.
Mr. McClung?
I think it would be good for the mayor to check with the Planning Commission and see what they have in updated material that can be given to Ms. Moyer, and maybe there's, maybe that will help in what she's asking for, and, you know, because I know there's more than just the plan itself, there's been supplements that have been done to that over the years. So that would be where I would start, is to see what the Planning Commission has that can be given to her. And, you know, it doesn't hurt to look into these things, that's for sure.
Yeah. Ms. Gurning?
So, to answer Ms. Moyer's question to the body, yes, I think I would be very interested in working with Planning. I agree, a plan from 1996, when so much has changed in the world, that, and where we want to go as a community, isn't the same as it was from 1996, I wouldn't think. And I think so that we can get together and let our community answer some questions and get involved. I get updates from the corridor, Bentonville, Bayettville, Rogers, Springdale. And one of them was going to have a town hall on asking their residents, I forget what it was, but they sent a survey out. So they're always working with their community to see, how do we want to grow as our town? And not just with City Council things or with Planning things, but we involve everybody. So I like that. And I don't know that we have a clue what that looks like today. I agree, we're so busy putting out fires that we're not forward-thinking at this moment.
I will be glad to get the Planning Commission and get whatever updates they have to you, Ms. Moyer. And I don't mean to be contentious either. I think what you're asking for is not invalid. I'm just stating that it's the Planning Commission's responsibility to provide that information, not the City Council. We have a list in here, and I'm sure y'all have seen this, of what the council's responsible for. And it's not in here to respond to developing a city plan or a master plan. That's the Planning Commission, that's why we have these commissions. And I'm not disagreeing with that. And when I say my vision of Eureka Springs, we are, we're growing right now. But we've been here for a long time, and we're limited. And what I wanted to do, and what the Planning Commission's looking into, is annexation. That's the only thing that we can really have any growth in right now. And they're looking into that aspect of it. But I will get you that information and talk to them about having a workshop with the Planning Commission and the City Council, so they can explain what they have done before. And, you know, maybe the City Council hadn't been aware of a lot of things, what the Planning Commission's done. But they spent, and they got a lot of people involved with the city when they did this last update, so. Mr. Hollefield?
Am I wrong, Cassie Dishman is the city planner, isn't that part of her job?
Correct.
So I think that's, that her and the planning zoning is where we should start. But I think any organization should have a plan for the future, almost like a mission statement saying, and then what the future looks like. And they may be there, we just need to ask if it's there. But I think it's something good to be put out to the public. Everybody knows what the city's looking for in the future and what our goals are. I don't think there's anything wrong with that at all, so.
Not at all. Has the City Council read, seen the vision plan? I know most of you have.
Yeah, I see.
So, but I'll ask Cassie about getting an update to you.
Yeah, to your point, that's exactly who I asked. So, I asked for the most recent plan, and the most recent plan she sent to me and actually stated, this is what I, this is what I have on file that I know of as the most recent plan, was the 1996 plan. So that's why I brought it to the table here, is to get it on record and to work together to find a way to create a vision for the city with community input.
It would seem like something like that would be updated periodically, annually maybe, or usually like a couple of years or something, so.
I don't think Cassie knew what you exactly were looking for. I told her to give you the plan, and I asked her, and she said she, you know, and I went and asked Ann Salee about it, and also talked to one of the citizens today who was actually involved with the vision plan, and he noticed that some of the items had been updated. So we will verify and see what I can find for you.
Again, it's not contentious, it's just, you know, we are the body that approves the budget, and we are in charge of citizens' safety and public safety and well-being. And I feel that, you know, to.
We are.
Expect for some vision is, and it absolutely applies when you think about economic development, ordinances that we might pass to help encourage economic development, ordinances that we might pass for any of the things that I mentioned before. That is definitely in our purview.
Absolutely. And I think it's up to the City Council. If you find any of those, for them to come to us to give to the City, to the Planning Commission. They have their own, a lot of items on their own plate. So anything, they're always willing to listen to anything.
I very much appreciate.
We are a legislative body. We're not, we're not a planning body.
I, I do not need a lecture on what this body is supposed to do. Thank you. And I would love to have any recent plan that exists. I don't know how else to describe it so that we might actually get it. And I would appreciate putting this on the agenda for next meeting. Thank you.
I don't mean to be contentious either, but I've also said I would be glad to get it for you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our next item, city communications, good topic. Ms. Gurning?
Motion to discuss city communications?
Yes, motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay.
So that's a great segue into what I was bringing up. So last meeting, I asked, a couple of, the last two meetings, I believe, I asked about follow-ups, because we weren't kept up to date on some action items, whether from us or from the hospital commission. For instance, on the third-party independent investigation, that even though a legal firm came in, it still did not, it was not, it was not what we were looking for, it's not what we were told would happen. Nonetheless, we had to ask. And that is where I would like to bring to the board, not just open, more open communications, but when we have actions from previous meetings, that maybe we need to note what those actions are, so we can ensure that they're closed, and that we find these actions are satisfactory. So when updates aren't communicated, it not only limits our ability to provide oversight, but also undermines the public confidence that concerns are being taken seriously. I know that Janet Parsons kind of said that when she spoke up here this evening about, she's one example of how the community views us, but we can't, we can't speak to things we don't know about. So that brings me to the broader point, the need for follow-up applies not only to the most recent issue that we had with the hospital commission, but also other areas of city operations. For example, we often hear Simon, he talks about the sewer and water, but he doesn't talk about the streets or the infrastructure. And we don't get updates from other city departments. And here's an example, I was walking and in my Ward 1 area, and I was stopped by somebody on Washington Street, and they said, hey, did you see what's, and I brought this up at the last meeting, thanking Simon's department for doing this, but, hey, did you know that they were putting this back there? We didn't know, but we're glad they're doing it. But they didn't have a chance to move their cars or anything, although it was done. So I think, I was kind of like, no, I'm sorry, I didn't know. Yeah, I'm your City Councilperson for your ward, but had no idea, sorry about that.
I'm sorry, what was, what was, what was done that you weren't aware of?
So they put in their, so. So they put in their, so behind Washington Street is an alley with gravel, it's a gravel road, and it keeps washing out. It's behind like, what's Tower House in that street there? And so apparently, to help with that washout, they put a concrete curb kind of thing in with a little drainage, so the water will go down away instead of pulling all the gravel down, which was wonderful. They were so happy about it. I was very happy about it, because they had come to me with issues. When we asked about bringing gravel in and grading it, well, we don't have a truck or the equipment to do that. So how do we correct this? Well, they came up with a solution unbeknownst to anybody here. So I just think regular communication basically ensures the council can work collaboratively, and the community sees progress on issues that affect them daily. Another example is, I had asked, I'm going to say almost a year ago, about when you come up, I think it's Mountain Street, and it's one-way up, and you come up there by Sparky's.
Eureka, Eureka Street?
Yeah, and you know, having that to where guests or tourists can see that now it turns into a two-way street. However, this weekend, when I was out for the run, I did see some new painting happening, like with an arrow going up the street. So I thought, oh, well, that's really nice. So it's kind of nice to know these things. We don't need details, but when Simon comes up and talks about sewer and water, can't he talk about some of his other areas, like the streets? So, so the regular communication, I think, helps us. And then I would like to know what the other council members, if they would think that, if they think that they would like to add to this, as I believe, ongoing communication benefits all of us in serving our community effectively, because we are asked things when we're out walking in our ward.
Ms. McClung?
I mean, they could certainly put online a projects list.
They can what?
Put online a projects list, you know what's going on, you know what, whether it's water leaks, sewer leaks.
Streets?
Street repairs, you know, you know, this is what's going on right now. These are all active, these are what we're looking at, you know, six, you know, two weeks out, six weeks out, whatever. I mean, that, that would be, I would think they have some kind of plan of that in, you know, on paper somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, because you would have to assign the people and the time and the budget. And, I mean, and think, even if we got maybe a vision plan.
Ms. Meyer?
The Public Works Facebook page usually puts out what their plans are.
On the Facebook page?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. And can then, can we have updates when Simon comes up for our council meetings as well?
Well, it's on their Facebook page.
What if not, everybody has Facebook?
A lot, we can have, I can have Simon. If you know it's on Facebook, you can tell your constituents that, what is happening. I mean, to have, Simon comes down here, it's true, but he's a busy guy. He spends a lot of time. There's not, they don't have an excessive number of employees at Public Works. If they're getting things done, I don't know, well, don't complain about when they do stuff. That's all I think of.
When I get an observation or something from a citizen about grading or something, I call Simon up and ask him if he can put that on the list. I don't think about coming to the city council and saying, oh, by the way, we had Simon do the grading on this. That is, that is more.
That's not what I was asking.
Well, that's similar to what you're talking about, about the drainage. There was another issue on another street that we've, that hadn't been paved, and they didn't have an access to it. And so I told Simon to see if he could go ahead and, and let's grade that alley and get the drainage fixed up there, because it hadn't been done, and it had never been done. And the owners actually were willing to do it themselves, but they didn't know the procedures. And I said, we'll get it taken care of.
And that's awesome. So all I'm saying is, when he comes up and he gives about, you know, the water and the sewer, he couldn't, he just say, oh, and, you know, some of the bigger projects, it doesn't have to be every little thing they do, but, hey, we're looking at doing this, or we're looking at adding this. I think we can let Simon make that decision, if Simon wants to talk about it. But I think it's very helpful.
Oh, no problem. I mean, we can have Simon address the streets without, without any issue.
Thank you.
On there.
So.
Ms. Moyer? I'm sorry. Were you done?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Ms. Moyer?
Well, I was just going to say, I think communication is really important, and I appreciate, you know, what, what you're saying, bringing it to the table. And I know that pressure of a citizen coming and asking about something that's happening, and me not knowing, right? Because I feel like they're expecting me to know and to communicate to them. So I understand that pressure, and the desire to avoid having to say, I don't know, and wanting to communicate with them, right? That's responsible, that's responsible behavior on our part. So my question to you would be, what is the procedure? If we have a question about something that's happening in the city, I'm obviously the newest one here, and I'm actually not sure what the procedure would be. If I have a question about what's happening in my ward or in the city, what, what do I do? How do I get the answer?
Call me.
Just call you?
Call me.
Okay.
That's the whole point. I mean, that's what Harry does.
That's the administrator.
I mean, I'm, I'm the administrator of the city, and I'm, I'm responsible for those actions. If there's something in your ward that needs to be taken care of, you call me up.
Okay.
And then I will see about getting it taken care of. Ms. McClung?
Yeah, this is, I just pulled it up. Eureka Springs Public Works on Facebook. I've never looked at it before. I didn't, I don't even know, I guess I had to type it in every time I want to find it. I don't know if there's a thing I can put to, you know, have it come up all the time, but it's pretty informative, really. There's all kinds of stuff on there.
It is.
Simon does a good job of keeping it updated and what's happening.
And it, and it makes reference to the streets and everything, employees, you know, it's, it's cut it off.
Parks does a pretty good job, too, on social media. I mean, I follow what they do on social media.
Yep. Ms. Gurney?
And so while we want to make the decision for Simon, I just want to say, that's one example. It would be nice that when something's going on within the, within the city that's being done, that it's brought to our attention, so that we look informed. I mean, I think the, the better informed we are to share with our community, it's just, rather than surprises, it provides more confidence.
I think our local radio stations listen to a lot more than it used to be, and, and I think that's a good place, that, you know, those public service announcements can be posted there, too, you know? And the Public Works could do that, say, hey, this is what's going on today, you know, we're.
Yeah, but not just Public Works, is what I'm saying.
Well, no, but that's, quite frankly, that's going to be most of it. You can't say, you know, the police can't go and say, well, we're going to do a drug bust over on Harvey today, and.
That's ridiculous.
Well, they could.
What time?
I don't know, Harvey.
Ms. Gurney, I understand what you're saying, and there's a lot of things that go on during the day that I don't think about communicating to the city council, because it's really an action that, that we're dealing with and taking care of, something that just comes up. You know, there's a water leak coming up, and I'd say, yes, let's go fix it, let's get it taken care of.
And that's understandable.
And I don't think about calling all the city council or putting out a blanket email.
I think you're stretching this. I'm not saying that you have to, if something emergent happens, but if you do know something's planned, and something's going to affect the city, whether it's good or bad or indifferent, if, just, I don't feel that we're, that we are communicated to. I don't know how anybody else feels. I was just throwing it out there.
You may be absolutely right. I'm not, not saying you're not. I'm just thinking back on, on the times when I was on city council also. I'm not sure I was ever, we were ever always informed on those things. But it is, like was mentioned, a lot of this, and we try to put, keep people informed by Facebook and other notions. So if you have any questions, don't hesitate to give me a call. I'll be glad to answer your question.
Oh, I know, you're, you're good with that.
Or if you're talking about something you want to know about, or whether or not we can talk about it or it needs to be on the city council, on the agenda. Mr. Meyer?
Since Simon's been head of Public Works, that's when the Facebook page was done, and I can't, what's his name that he delegates to the streets? Oh, shoot.
With Public Works?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm.
Anyway, he's the one that posts street stuff, and Simon posts the water and sewer stuff. But like I said, they're, they're busy. And let's say they have a plan on doing this this week, but then something blows up over here, and they got to drop that and go over here and do that, and then somebody's going to say, oh, well, you told us you were going to fix this this week, or not. And I've seen that happen.
It does happen, and I think people would understand that it happens, but also that they know that it's in the forefront of something being done in their area.
Well, and we've, somebody, when I was on city council, somebody asked me, what's going on? I'd say, you know, I don't know, but I'll get back and find out for you. Because we're not, we're not expected, y'all aren't expected to know everything that's happening.
I get that.
But if there's a question that somebody comes up with, just say, I'll get back, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah. It's the easiest form of communication, is give me a call. Call. Keep it open. So, all right, anything else? Okay, agenda setting. Anyone?
Just to make sure that we have that back on air with an ordinance for next meeting.
I've got it down.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. City council comments. Ms. McClung?
Okay, wait, we're, are we doing agenda settings?
Yes.
I'd like to add sidewalks.
Sidewalks?
Mm-hmm.
Can we add visioning?
Sure. I'm sorry, what?
Visioning.
Didn't.
Visioning committee.
Oh, visioning.
Or visioning, yes.
How about if we just try to get a workshop together with the planning commission?
That's, that's fine.
I mean, it sounded like we're just going to keep on going over the same routine. And I'd rather have the people who are responsible for planning and the vision of Eureka Springs involved, rather than the city council.
They have a lot of answers for us.
And if you have a question, and you've got concerns, let's all get together and work with the planning commission. I mean, to me, that's the positive aspect of it, instead of us trying to do something ourselves, because that's not the point. Same thing.
My goal is just to have follow-up, so if a workshop works out better, then I think that's a great idea.
I will get, I'll work with the work, the planning commission and work on this. All right, anything else? All right, Ms. McClung, council comments?
I got to go listen to the aerials on Saturday night at the park. I'm concerned that it might get rained out, but it cleared off, and it was, it was a great show from seven to nine, and a good crowd. That's on a good note. I hate, well, I'm not going to say it now. It's, the words just aren't clear in my head, so I'm just, I'm just going to quit right there. That's all.
All right, thank you, Ms. McClung. Mr. Meyer?
A while back, at a meeting, I was the subject of the, of the, what I would call disparaging comments. Now, and it was all because of guidelines from our, that I signed and all that. Well, here it is in public meetings. This does not allow, however, council members to make belligerent, personal, impertinent, slanderous, threatening, abusive, and disparaging comments. Avoid personal comments that could offend other council members. There was no legislative purpose for that item on the agenda. There was no reason for a personal attack based on innuendo from a newspaper article. Now, if, if, if that is allowed at our council meetings, boy, we're going to have a lot of raucous meetings. I expect an apology. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Moyer?
First of all, I want to say, thank you for being here tonight, because I imagine that that would be very difficult to face the consequences of what's been said, and I think that shows strength in character. I want to appreciate those who came to voice their views here tonight in public comment. And I'm actually, believe it or not, I'm really encouraged by this whole situation. The community came and expressed differing views, and they did it in a fairly respectful and peaceful manner. I teach ANG, I teach American National Government at the University of Arkansas, and two weeks ago, we had the threat of a shooter on campus, and this after a national event like that with Mr. Kurt. I've been involved in some pretty heavy and emotional conversations with people of varying ages in the last couple of weeks. And I think that's how our society has to move forward, is to have difficult conversations in a respectful and peaceful manner. And I feel like what happened tonight demonstrated that, and I just want to say that I appreciate everybody involved, and I also appreciate the law enforcement present. I think that this is a very critical time in our history, and how we react has really lasting implications for all of us, and that's why I just want to say thank you. Not what I was planning on making comment on, so if you don't mind, humor me for just another minute. Also positive, I wanted to acknowledge the obvious redirection with regard to the hospital's financial situation. This table has questioned previous financial reporting, and the council now receives regular and comprehensive financial reporting. I think that's a win. We questioned the efficiency of contract labor, and the current CEO appears to be moving away from relying on contract labor, and that's a win. We questioned gaps in reporting bad debt, and the current CEO has announced that they've developed a policy and are working to address this gap, and I think that's a win. This table has said all along that it was prudent to work with a budget, and while it's obvious that the hospital still has some real financial challenges moving forward, the CEO announced a zero-sum budget for the remainder of the year, and that is a win. I want to publicly acknowledge what I consider to be a remarkable and positive redirection in the management of the hospital's finances by Ms. Means, and I continue to voice my support for that. Also, I wanted to acknowledge Main Street and success of the Run Unicorn Run. I did run with my five-year-old grandson. He will remember that for the rest of his life. It was fun. It was so Eureka, and I really appreciate it. It was positive, and it showcased a side of Eureka that we all love, and that's what I heard tonight. We want more of that. The community's been on my mind a lot lately, and I also want to acknowledge all the positive programming that's happening at the Eureka Springs Community Center. Thank you. They recently renovated their weight room. They've created a semi-private space to workout for those who might feel a little self-conscious working out in a room with a bunch of people, and might desire some more privacy. So thank you to the director and the board for creating a wonderful, positive, community space, and that is really the motivation behind bringing up the visioning plan tonight. So I wanted to end on a positive note.
Mr. Amazano?
Yes. So it is no surprise that I was the subject of a lot of conversation tonight. And actually, I'm, I welcome. I'm, I welcome those conversations. I always have. I've never told anybody that this is not an issue that's not, this is an issue that's not up for discussion. I always want people to come and talk to me. I always, hopefully, I can give them the same respect in doing so. It doesn't always happen that way, but that's what I do wish for. I also was very impressed, like Rochelle mentioned, the people that actually showed up to speak about something that was dear to their heart, that they firmly believed in. I respect that for everyone. It's our basic first amendment right. We may not always say things that are kosher or going to be read the way that we intended them and that is absolutely what happened with my Facebook post on my private page. What is unfortunate is that I did make an apology, however, maybe I need to make that to somebody personally. I don't know because no one's come to me personally and asked me for that, which I would rightfully give. There were a couple of things said tonight that are actually kind of funny that I wanted to point out. There was some talk about me wanting citizens' arrest. I did no such thing. I contacted the mayor's office. I said, "I am receiving threats. My family is receiving threats. My 81-year-old mother has received a threat. My business is receiving threats. What do I need to do?" So I followed the guidance of the mayor's office in making sure that that stuff was taken care of. And, you know, as a private business owner, as much of us are around this table, I have the right to decide who is and is not welcome in my establishment. I mean, I'm not going to call out any names, but there's actually a person at this table that I borrowed from my bar and restaurant. We have since made amends because we had a conversation and now I consider her a very good friend. But let's get one thing straight. Not everything is always about politics and it's certainly not about politics at my bar. We don't discuss politics at my bar. I've actually thrown people off my porch for speaking politics. However, what I will throw you out of my bar for is making yourself throw up in front of other customers. I will throw you out of my bar when you grope young women that work for me. I will throw you out of my bar when I know you're cheating on your wife with someone else at my bar. Respect the women. Respect your partner. I will throw you out of my bar for generalizing LGBTQIA people in this community and likening them to terrorists from the Middle East. If you've been banned from my bar, you know exactly why you've been banned from my bar. There is no secret and anyone who asks me, I will tell them. Again, I will always be open to respectful dialogue and I will always own my words. Just don't twist them. If you want to know what I had to say, ask me what I had to say and what I meant by it. I have no problem sharing that information with anyone. If offense was taken, I do apologize. My focus and my desire and the reason why I do what I do for the city and for the people of the city, it's always about keeping Eureka Springs vibrant, keeping it diverse, and above all, keeping it safe for everyone that actually shares those same values. And if any of you are still in this room that had something to say at the beginning of this meeting, I welcome a conversation after this meeting. I have no problem with it at all. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neal?
Wow. I think David said everything he wanted to say and I'm not going to follow up with that. CA PC meeting this Wednesday, the 24th, 5:00 p.m. here. It's a regular monthly meeting. Cemetery tour, your very last chance to see the tour this Saturday at 11 o'clock, $20. The tours have raised almost $1,800 for the cemetery, which is great because, and I'm not here to plug the cemetery, but their plot sales are down for some reason, so the cemetery is hurting financially, so. They'll start again next spring. Of course, the next month is the Silent City, the two weekends and everybody goes to that. It's a great thing to do. That benefits the cemetery and the history, Eureka Springs History Museum. Planning zoning last meeting, a member of the commission announced that I had brought up the vacant building issue, that it's now a dead issue. That's far from true. I've not brought it up the last couple of meetings because I'm still researching. I'm not giving up that bone yet, so. But they did bring it up and actually put it on their agenda for their next meeting to talk about it as well, which I really welcome. So, and then we even heard tonight, there's people, there's concern about these vacant buildings in town and we'll move forward and see what their solutions are. Unicorn race, we talked about a lot of negative stuff. I thought it was a great race. I saw Rochelle and her grandson over there running. It was great. But I want to do a major shout-out for the organization of this race. When they put the signs up a week early telling you where the route is, that's wonderful. There was, a couple of years ago, I got chewed out by Bobby Ray for driving through a race and I didn't even know existed. I didn't see a plot, you know, map anywhere. So he said, "I'll let you get away with this time. Don't ever do it again." I'm like, "I didn't know what I was doing." I really appreciate that these folks went through the trouble of making these signs and post them early and everybody's aware, so. I really appreciate that. And that's it.
Ms. Gruney?
Wow, again, so some of the things I was going to talk about, the unicorn race as well, it was great. It was well-planned. I wanted to shout out to Main Street, of course, all the volunteers that were part of it, but also Simon who went out and put cones out and helped mark areas and the Eureka Springs Police Department that I went over and talked to. They were there in all the right areas, patrolling the place. It was so fun, the diverse crowd. We had a guy that showed up from New York. He wants to run in every state, so this race was his race for Arkansas. We had, I'm friends with the Statons that had Staten Art Gallery. They had somebody staying at their place that saw the signs, didn't plan on running, but ended up running, so that was kind of cool. All the states that were representative in our first-time race and according to this race sponsor that Main Street went to, they said, "Expect twice as many next year, so be ready. It'll be wonderful." And then I did want to shout out again, Simon, don't get too big of a head here, but the painting that's been done on the streets, you have a street crew that's growing and I think we all appreciate having that. I think too, the paint on the streets, on the curbs, marking the parking spaces, gives it a clean, fresher look for our town as well.
I also think Simon came in second in the mile run. So good job.
Well, Rochelle stole my thunder about Simon.
Oops.
Although he's already been talked about so much and all he's done, but I thought it was great that he entered the race and then he came in second. So, but he's real proud also of our new worker that we have who's just learning how to paint stripes with our new paint striping machine that we bought. So that's something that you will be seeing and you'll see it on the courthouse, some new arrows and the same ones probably up there at the top of Mountain Street and on and around. So hopefully we'll be able to get a lot of that curb painting done and parking lot painting. So, and on to, you know, positive note also, this coming weekend is the 34th Annual Corvette Weekend, starting Thursday, the 25th through the 28th. So you're going to be seeing them all around Eureka and the main show will be Saturday at Pine Mountain Village. And they usually always fill up and they have everything from the brand-new Corvettes to, you know, usually they always have a 1955 or 56, rather, maybe a 58 Corvette's there. So if you like Corvettes, it's a good show. The same weekend, another one of my favorite festivals that we haven't had in a while is the Fat Tire Festival, which is going to be based out at Lake Leatherwood and that's for the dirt bikes and that's always a lot of exciting and a lot of fun to watch. So if you get a chance, September 26th through 28th out at Lake Leatherwood. And then same weekend, it's a busy weekend. We have the 5th Annual Fine Arts in the Ozarks and I don't have an address for that. It's just that it's this weekend, so it's reception. So I guess look in the paper possibly for that one. Also, the Fall Unity Gathering on Saturday up at the Passion Play is going to be a gathering of a bunch of faith-based bikers who are going to be up there all day, having a lot of fun, different testimonies and worship and it's open to all recovery organizations and all patches, they say. So that evening on the 27th, we got Caney Creek playing at the Basin Park for their concert from 4:00 to 6:00. We got Comedy House with Randall George on Saturday, the 27th. And every Saturday, they're out at Gaskin Switch, so if you're into some comedy, that's a new show in town. Well, not actually, to know, they've been going on for a while. Bike Blues and Barbecue will begin Wednesday, October 1st through October 5th. So it's going to be all around town. Basin Park Concert for the Los Roscos on Friday, October 3rd. So that'll be another good concert. It's a local band that we have. And then the Bahair, Bahr, it's another concert, October 5th, Sunday, from 4:00 to 6:00. Drumming in the Park, October 4th, 6:00 to 8:00. And then the Hillbilly Music Festival will begin October 8th through Sunday, October 12th, out at the Farm Campground. And then on the 11th, Live at the Auditorium is a gully washer and it is a big washing, it says, "A Big Washing Rain Which Sorts," describes an indie folk America string band trio. So I'm not sure, but it sounds like fun. There'll be 5:00 to 7:00 at the auditorium. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
All right, I'm in favor.
Aye.
Thank you all.